What leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
I will call this meeting of school board, District 54. Clark, will you take your place?
Brittany Anderson.
Natalie Pennington here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Wernke.
Here.
Ms. Hermes present, Steven Biggison.
Here.
We have a floor.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda this morning?
To move.
On a second.
One second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Alright, our agenda is approved. We'll move on to reports and we'll start this morning with Doug Anderson, our facility supervisor. Good morning.
Good morning. So, I'm just gonna go over each facility. We'll start with Adams. Try to, Elaine, so to keep it somewhat brief, so. Just over at Adams, staffing for this year, we have in place at this point, so we should be good there to start the year. As far as the building goes, just completing repairs as needed on the building. Roof repairs have been good at this point this summer and stuff. We haven't had any leaks over there as far as the roof goes. We did repair one section of sidewalk that needed to be repaired this summer. That should be getting finished up. Should be last Friday. He was gonna put dirt in along the side of that, so. I'm gonna go over fire marshal stuff that we had an inspection in, for all buildings in February. During that time, we, we had some correction orders for some light covers and stuff. While I was on leave, fire marshal did come back and we got clearance on that for his reports for all buildings, so we should be good there. We have so, a few small repairs that we have to do. So, annual inspections were completed this summer for all buildings also, so. Hop into Cleveland. Cleveland staff is in place to start the school year. We have Matt O'Pats moved over there for head custodian. Building, just same thing there, just repairs as we've been needing them and moving along throughout the year. Room remodel is completed, so that's done. No other issues at this point with like roof leaks and that type of thing. Some inspections were done there also. Kennedy, staffing, we're getting closer. We did do, get a couple people onboarded for the school year and stuff, so. Projects that we, you know, in, we'll be looking at coming up would be on the pool and stuff. I do have a phone call and a couple emails in to Scott. I think he might be on vacation, I'm not sure, to get back, working with him a little bit on our pool project. Golden Silver Gym projected for next year. It was bypassed this year. We're looking at around approximately sixty-five thousand to redo that completely. And that would include a lot of board repairs. We've got a lot of cracked boards in there, so there's a lot of boards that are gonna be, have to be replaced in there just due to the way the, that particular gym floor was built, so. We'll be looking at some tough point eventually here, so I'll be getting quotes on that for Kennedy. Track resurfacing. We got a quote last spring for that and that come in at about a hundred and ten thousand for resurfacing for track. So that'd be basically cleaning off the track, resealing, repainting, fixing and repairing anything that wouldn't need to be done on that. Football field, the turf. Also got some price quotes this last week on potential, you know, and we, we also had a advanced care program done on that to lift, you know, the infill on it to get rid of some of the compaction and stuff. They clean it at the same time, kinda try to get anything out of there. That, that cost runs about twenty-nine, about three thousand dollars approximately, so. And that includes some repairs if we have any tears, like seams coming loose, that type of thing, so. Potential cost on replacing our turf, just depending upon when we do it and stuff, was a quota of about five hundred and nine thousand, so. Just looking forward, you know, in this building also, looking at hard floors and, you know, some of the vinyl here in this building and stuff, so. They're starting to get some cracking and stuff like that in this building, so those are potential larger things coming down. Lincoln, we just are gonna have some poples repaired within the next couple weeks here on the drive out there. No major issues overall. We got some cement scaling on in front. We're trying to work with Comstock's a little bit and they're trying to figure out what's going on with that, so. McKinley staffing in place at this point. We had a roof drain replaced this summer that had been a problem, so we're hoping that takes care of that. Just overall on that roof, that, that is an old roof. I think that's probably one of the oldest roofs in the district. We do have some corners pulling and stuff like that, so we'll be having some small repairs that we need to do on that coming up here. And then in August, we did have an alarm problem, so we ended up, I believe we replaced some smoke detectors and then it was a relay in our fire alarm panel, so. Roosevelt. Staffing, we're gonna have to do some switching around a little bit, but overall I think we'll be okay. We have one, one person out right now, so till we get him back, we'll have to shuffle some people around. As far as the building goes, one thing that probably next summer, and we'll be getting quotes on this, is we need to get some cement repair done in front of door G down by the gym. The entrance of the gym where they come in by the concession stand there and also that door. That whole storefront door frame is pretty much rusted on on the bottom, so. From overall years of having salt there and everything else. I think that's it. That covers all of our buildings. Any questions or?
The Roosevelt Gym floor?
Roosevelt Gym floor, yep.
Yeah, is that gonna be covered by the donation fund that was established or is that something that?
For Roosevelt, I'm not, I'm not sure where that come out of for sure. I think.
A lot of that was.
Last year. That would've been last year.
Okay, but is, there's more repair?
No, that would be for our Golden Silver Gym here at Kennedy. Yep, golden silver, yep.
Alright. Any other questions for Doug?
Just a comment. I had a community member tell me this summer, they came here for an event and they had just gotten done waxing the floors and they said they looked really, really nice.
Good. In the building and stuff?
Yeah, in the area Kennedy.
Yep, it's good to hear. Yep, so.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, then our next report will be Scott from back, our elementary principal.
Good morning. Well, we have a big day in our district today. As you know, it's the first day of workshops, so we're looking forward to welcoming our staff back to our schools. A big week. A lot of things planned this week as far as some trainings and of course, we always look forward to open house. That's Wednesday evening from five to seven at the elementary schools. I think it's a little bit of a different timing here at, in Kennedy. Back to school letters went out last Thursday, so families should have started to receive their back to school letters in the mail on Friday or Saturday. And in those letters, of course, families find out who their child's teacher is so that when they come to open house on Wednesday, they, they know where to go. So, we have some staff meetings this morning at eight, at eight-thirty at Adams and ten-thirty at McKinley, so. I think when I'm done this morning, I'll probably just excuse myself and maybe won't stick around to hear my colleague. I wanted to give you some numbers though. It's always interesting to look at numbers. These are numbers as of last evening. So we'll start with kindergarten. We're sitting at one hundred sixty-six students. Of those one hundred sixty-six, eleven of those are doing kindergarten again with us. So it's been really one hundred fifty-five new kids to the district. Those kids are split over nine sections or nine kindergarten classrooms. Last year we had ten. This year we're planning for nine. What happened to the other kindergarten teacher? She's teaching first grade this year at McKinley School. So right now, our kindergarten classes are sitting at eighteen or nineteen kids per classroom. And we know from past experience, that number generally only goes one way between now and the first day of kindergarten, Wednesday, September sixth, and that is, that is up. Alright, so let's talk about first grade. First grade, we are sitting at one hundred ninety-one students. Of those one hundred ninety-one students, we have three of our nine classes over at McKinley. We've always had usually two over there. Sometimes we've had three, not often, but this is one of those years that we have three sections of first grade at McKinley. The other two-thirds of our first graders or the other six classrooms are of course at Adams. If we take those one hundred ninety-one kids, split them up amongst nine classrooms, we're looking at classes of twenty-one or twenty-two in first grade. And then our second grade numbers are one hundred seventy students. That is the one group then that we have eight classrooms in second grade. Of course, they're all at Adams School and that is classroom sizes of twenty-one or twenty-two. So a total of five hundred twenty-seven students in grades K through two as of last evening. Lots of new employees. I just wanna say some names real quick. We have a new second grade teacher at Adams School, Jenny Matheson. A new first grade teacher at McKinley, his name is Dave George. A new first grade teacher at Adams School, her name is Gabby Frederickson. And then we have two new positions that I'm very thankful and excited about. These are reading and math interventionists. So we have at McKinley School, Myrna Manosa, and at Adams School, Troy Davis. We have a new Title I para at McKinley, Julie Johnson. A new para educator at Adams School, Tom Haggy. And then two new student support aides. These are not new positions, but student support aides that are new to our buildings and Fremont at McKinley and Kiara Cox at Adams School. So, I think I just went through about nine new folks. Yeah, so I, I'm gonna get into some thank yous here and then I have a quick comment. First of all, I just wanna thank our building custodians, Lisa Barker and John Guths at McKinley School and Stacy Basin, Karen Becker at Adams School. Our buildings are looking great and I thank those four individuals for their, for their fine work this summer. And I wanna just give a little thank you to our secretaries at McKinley School, Michelle Carlson and at Adams School, Brittany Conrad. They started back two weeks ago and it's always nice when I can get those two back. And then lastly, and, and there's so many people I could thank, but I do wanna give a little shout out to Elaine, the nine people I just mentioned. I started feeling guilty every time I'd have to email her with a new employee because I know that there's a tremendous amount of work involved to onboard a new employee to the district, so. Elaine, I was just, you know, thinking and feeling a little bit sorry for you as I send you yet another, another name, so. Thank you, thank you for the part that you play after we find them and hire them. And then lastly, just a few areas of emphasis or focus for our school year at McKinley and Adams. We are going to put a renewed emphasis upon attendance for our youngest kids. I know, I believe that's one of our district goals, but I appreciate the work that our county plays in this and coming from our assistant county attorney, she is eager to, to get after it and start having some conversations with some of our families of our youngest kids. And then in some curricular areas, areas of focus, our math curriculum, we are just simply entering year two of our math curriculum, so there's still a lot of unpacking and learning with our math curriculum. And then we, we dabbled in this a little bit last year. We're excited about this, but we have a, a new curriculum for our phonemic awareness and our phonics instruction. So that will be an area of focus. And then our approach to, I guess you called an approach to student management, is our love and logic training, which we had eight hours of training last June and then another four hours tomorrow. So a lot of new things on the plates of staff in grades K through two. So my, my mantra this year is hopefully, nothing new, nothing new, nothing new. We just wanna focus, focus, focus on some of these things that I just mentioned. With that, I would entertain, entertain any questions from the board. Okay, so if you don't mind, if you just excuse me and go off to Adams and start our day. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, then we'll move on to our next report from our middle school principal, Ellen Hurst.
Good morning, everyone. Great to see you again. We've had a really busy summer with a number of new hires as well. Scott ran through quite a list and we have, we have thirteen new hires in the middle school alone, so. We've been communicating and connecting with those staff members to ensure a smooth start to the school year. As well this summer, we've been busy working through some of the new legislation that we, that we received last May and then making the usual preparations for the school year. Enrollment for the upcoming year. Grade five is in seven sections and that's a hundred and seventy-five students. Grade six is in seven sections. That's a hundred and eighty-eight students. At grade seven, we're at one eighty-three. And grade eight is two fifteen. Compared to last year at this, at this school board meeting when we reported numbers, we're down nineteen students in the middle school. Right Start was held for our fifth graders on Thursday, August seventeenth. We had, we had over a hundred and thirty fifth graders enter our building and get more comfortable with school routines and expectations, as well as tours around the building. Thank you to the teachers that worked the Right Start program, which included Angie Leach, Ian Goose and Emily Eber, as well as Lydia Rutton, one of our new teachers. We held brief parent meetings at the beginning of each morning and afternoon session just to connect with those parents, answer any questions. As you know, we have open house on Wednesday. We've made adjustment again to our open house from last year's plan to try create more of an open house feel. We are holding just two grade level meetings, one at fifth grade, five P M, and one at seventh grade, six thirty P M. Families in sixth and eighth grade are welcome to attend one of the sessions if they choose. And then we also have decided to distribute information to families that will be presented at that meeting to incur, ensure that that information is delivered and available as, as those people might need. So trying to create a more of an open house feel so we can come and go and have a more relaxed atmosphere at some, some level. Mr. Kolbeck mentioned a couple of changes in, in the K through two. We also have two primary changes as well in the middle school, but they have been a whole year in the planning and coming and, and they are our character education curriculum, which is the second step curriculum we talked about last year. If you recall, we piloted three curriculums and we settled on second step. Teachers will be trained this week on implementation of the program. Calendars have been created and will be shared with staff for the upcoming school year. We look forward to seeing that in action. Along with that, students in seventh and eighth grade will have an otter advisory period each day. The period will run for twenty-two minutes. We have approximately eighteen to twenty students in each advisory period. The goal of that advisory period is primarily to build relationships with students, help keep students on track, focus, check grades, build relationships, as well as deliver that second step lesson to our students in seventh and eighth grade. So those are our two primary big changes. I mentioned the number of new staff this year. We had our new teacher day last Thursday. Mr. Steinbrenner and I met with them to discuss philosophy and get them talking. They were a pretty chatty bunch, so that was nice to see. Sometimes, sometimes staff meetings don't have a lot of back and forth participation, but this group, they were, they were willing to share, so it was really nice. We have additional support meetings planned for them, as well as regular check-ins for the first few months. And then final thank yous to our custodial department. Sean and his crew have been fantastic to work with and really responsive to our needs. I'm, I'm really thankful for that crew and then as well as our tech department, Jesse, Rhonda, I guess Mike too, but, and then Sue as, as well. They've been really great, totally responsive, get back to you quickly and that's, that's what you're looking for, so. I'm really appreciative of those folks. Questions from the middle school?
I have a question. One of the policies that was passed by the legislature this last year was to provide female products for students. So are those going to be in all of the bathrooms in the middle school area too?
Yep.
That's not, a student doesn't have to come up to the girls?
No. I don't think they're installed yet, but yeah, that, by legislation, those have to be in there. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, our next report, Mark Anderson, school principal.
Good morning. Hope you guys all had a great summer. I'd like to start by thanking maintenance. Get to watch them wander around the building. I don't mean that like they're not working, but when they had to wax the floors, summer school is happening, so watching them try to stay out of space and at the same time allowing academics and summer curriculum to get delivered and not get in the way of that happening was absolutely amazing to watch. You lock down a hallway that was nice and shiny and then you go down a hallway that was a little, that needed a little work yet, but Sean and his crew did an amazing job and the facility looks awesome. We did something different this year. Our ninth graders, we needed to spend more time with our parents, especially coming out of schedule and just getting information back. They wanted us to be in longer than a thirty-minute meeting with them. So last Wednesday, we met with our ninth graders and we had about eighty-five percent attendance and were able to present to them. Actually Shane did the majority of the presentation. I talked specifically on attendance and a couple other things. But it went over really well. We had some good questions, asked us some things. Placing some information in Student View so they had access to it, didn't have to go hunt for it on the website, so we took their suggestions and put it in places that worked best for them. Our tenth through twelfth graders had the opportunity to be, to come that night. They did not get their Chromebooks, nor did they get their schedules, so we didn't see a lot of tenth graders, but we did have about forty families come. They asked some good questions too. One of them is, are seniors and juniors gonna be allowed to have a free period if they have two college classes? And that is a no. Too many people don't show back up at class on time and the question we were asked, well, they're good kids. We average fifty-nine percent daily attendance at the high school and that's down four percent before COVID. So, and that's just this year's data. That doesn't count last year's. And if you ask the ladies in the office, they'll tell you it's worse than that. So our, our whole big deal this year is presence in the building, not leaving campus and being in, in space where you need to be on time with the information, with the stuff you need. Activities started. We've had a lot of activities. I know the tennis girls are probably wore out already. I think they had three or four matches last week and they have a bunch again this week. Soccer is in full gear. They get to play three or four games over the next five days. So it's gonna be really active here. It's awesome to see the kids back two weeks ago. Changes the atmosphere and culture in the building. Math and language arts. Math curriculum was purchased for most, everybody two years ago. The high school did not use that last year because they were doing their curriculum in scope and sequence. They did their training this summer and are ready for that curriculum and use that stuff to prepare for this school year. Language arts, we'll spend some time this week, I believe tomorrow, doing some of the things with their curriculum here for, that's new for us at the high school. Our staff meeting today is at one o'clock. We are gonna work on culture and relationships in our community, in our building, and we wanna move that needle for students in attendance. We were really clear with our parents that we wanted ninety-five percent daily attendance. That would be amazing if that happened. That would be almost a forty-point jump. I don't know that we'll see that, but if we could get to eighty percent, that would be a nice move for us as we move in the right direction. Our P L C work this year will be focused on reviewing the content that we put in, scope and sequence and our standards, our guaranteed curriculum, how we use them and use the reteaching in guided study hall, which is otter time, and then we're gonna look at the four questions of P L Cs. They're gonna look at their data, bring that information, write additional assessments. So as we move forward in school years, we have the ability for kids to retake tests and specific pieces on it and we have multiple assessments that we can use and don't have to give the same one twice. And one of the two things that is changing for us is social studies was supposed to go forward this year in curriculum review, but the state's got a few things they're looking at, all good things, but before they make that requirement and that movement forward, they're pushing, we're pushing back, not we, we're pushing that back a year, which is really a good thing for us. Some good things came out of legislation for us to review and for the state. But health and P E will get on the docket this year, so we're looking forward to seeing, especially with almost three new staff members at the high school, what our content and curriculum will be and what kinda courses and renaming that we'll possibly be doing as we look, move, look to move forward with that department. The A L C had a busy summer. We had a ton of kids in the building. We had approximately eighty-six kids enrolled this summer. Hundred and seventy-seven credits were earned. Hundred and seventy-seven credits. That's a lot. Five students actually graduated this summer that did not make it to graduate in, with us as a high school, five. So that, we were excited about that. We had one young man that had to come extra one day to sit with Mr. Anderson for three and a half hours to complete his class. We did not wanna make him start over and go again, so he completed that with me and it was awesome to see. Students had breakfast again this, and lunch this summer. We did have students from Battle Lake and Ashby that also attended the building, so. And it was nice to see Carrie in the building this summer, building those relationships and I'm excited to watch that A L C grow with her leadership this next year. Fast track, at-risk incoming ninth graders who struggled possibly as a seventh grader academically have offer, have the opportunity to earn an extra credit. Eight students came this summer and earned their credit, which is exciting, so now they kinda have a cushion of one credit. Hopefully they don't fail anything and we don't need to have them go to summer school, but it was nice to have them in the building and build that relationship also. The A L C enrollment will be capped at eighty-five. Last two years, we've watched the A L C grow quickly and you get to a hundred and a hundred and fifteen kids and that's not the philosophy of the A L C. It's supposed to be fifteen, sixteen kids a class. We had twenty to twenty-five at times and it doesn't make for a good culture of the building, so we're capping it. That's hard for us because we want to make sure that all kids have opportunities. So we have thirty-eight seniors down there this year. Hopefully, Amy Christensen is correct that she believes thirty of them should make it, so we have eight to really hit hard at and focus on, on what that would mean for them to gain some credits again to graduate. We do have about ten ninth graders going in down there. It was nice to see. They had their boot camp. We had a couple boys that spent some time with Mr. Tilke and I last summer who are great kids, but this building was not the place for them. Watching them connect with their A L C group this, this year, they're sophomores. These kids are excited to be there. One young man who's gonna work, worked probably forty or fifty hours already this summer, called his boss twice and said, "I can't make it till this is over with. I need to be present. I feel valued and important down here." So those are great messages to hear and the senior seniors who are mentors to those kids have made an impact already and the teachers are purposely sitting next to them, building that conversation and getting to know the students. One young lady who, I don't know that she's attended more than a third of the time from the time she's been in this building at K S S, made the comment, "The last day of the last minute, I finally feel safe and I, I, somewhere I belong." So I'm excited to watch. So I'm excited to watch her growth and her development down at the ALC. Um, and her excitement to be back in school and want to be here every day. So, um, as much as it hurts to watch them go down the hill, um, the ALC is a great place for kids to go. It's a, it is a safe place, has a great culture. And when the kids get down there, they don't want to come back up the hill. So those are exciting things to see and an opportunity. Because not all of us need to be in the same place, same space to get what we need from our education. Ryan had his uh two days back with his staff last week for IQ. Um, they worked on curriculum uh this year and scope and uh sequence, they're working on some of those pieces. Uh, they set up their classroom banners, it was cool to watch them share them with us and some of the things they, they put on there to get kids, kids to want to be in a class and connect with them. He did talk about chat uh GPT, which we will talk about in our staff meeting. It's the artificial intelligence, you can actually have it write, write your, write a paper for you. Um, so the, the better you are at asking questions and defining what you want, the better the paper gets written. You can have it write, do your math work if you wanted to. So we as a school have to figure out how we can use that to make opportunities here in the building. Um, and I even talking with a college professor in the English department, she uses it already. She allows her students to use it to write the first paper, then ask them to use six additional things that she gives them to write the paper during class. So how are we gonna use this? How does it work moving forward? Um, it's not going away, so we might as well embrace it and figure out how it works. We have an ALC uh teacher who actually uses it to write papers, to have kids edit them, um, to show the errors in things that happen. So there's a lot of great opportunities there. And Ryan had EL slash ML, because it'll be multi-language, not English language moving forward. Uh, PD uh for an hour, hour and a half also with the staff to focus on the needs that students who are in those programs have. And he was awesome to see his first hour, hour and a half where he built the relationships and had staff actually talk about what went on this summer. Some of the things that went well for them and some of the things they're looking forward to. So IQ, ALC and high school are ready for a great school year. Any questions?
Do you see enrollment in IQ Academy?
Oh, I, he, he, I have, I'll have to ask him, they were still getting kids coming in the other day. So um it's down for a little bit from where it was at last year at this time. Um, but, so he, he and I are waiting for the rest of the week before we go to that piece.
I just have more of a comment about, uh, I, I appreciate the attitude on chat GPT. It could be, it could easily be, oh, we gotta fight this, we gotta find ways to make sure they're not using this thing and it. But like you said, it's not going away. Um, but I love the fact that they're allowing kids to use it, but also teaching them how to write at the same, same time. So I, that was, that was great to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then our final report is from superintendent Drake.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, it's been a very busy summer for the district office. We have a lot of initiatives underway, um, both in purchasing um potential new site for elementary school, but also the Lincoln Phase Two project. Um, as Principal Colbeck alluded to, there's been multiple hiring going on. Uh, that's continued throughout the course of the summer. Uh, but now that there's just a little added Christmas to the air and you can just see the edges of some of the trees, leaves starting to turn. That means it's time to welcome our students and families back for another year. And I think I speak for the entire staff that were excited about the year ahead. Uh, we have a lot of great initiatives that were begun last year, a few more introduced this year. And then really, um, moving forward, the bulk of the strategic plan will be in place and it's fine tuning and review and adjustment. Uh, some thank yous, and I see my forwarder's not working, hang on just a sec. There we go. Some thank yous, uh, to the, we've mentioned it before, but to the custodians, uh, building and grounds, to the mechanical workers. Um, huge thank yous. I've been in the buildings, the buildings look fantastic. Uh, there's nothing like a freshly waxed floor, uh, to put a smile on your face. I had an opportunity to greet the graduating class of nineteen sixty-three. Uh, for their class reunion, uh, we met at the um Otter Field House. And they were so thrilled to be back in that space and to see the improvements and to kind of relive some of the memories they made there. And um to see that the district uh also took pride, pride in the facility. Uh, that was just a really nice morning to spend with them. And thanks to our office staff for the work that they have done preparing for the start of this school year. Uh, all the people that worked during the summer. And our teachers for uh the work that they do with open house and preparing their rooms, classrooms for the new students. So, um, my thanks to everyone in the organization that worked so hard to make a great start to the school year. I also have a special thanks to the Fergus Falls Police Department. Uh, they are conducting safety trainings with our staff, uh, both today and tomorrow in their respective buildings. So we appreciate that, was very generous uh of the amount of time that they're devoting to help us ensure that we have a safe uh school year for both staff and students. Uh, we are still looking for a mechanical worker, uh, so uh shout out to the community for someone that's mechanically inclined, looking for a great opportunity. Uh, we do have an opening. And then we mentioned the open house nights, um, McKinley Adams in Cleveland from five to seven on Wednesday evening. Um, Kennedy Secondary School, grades five through twelve, um, going on that evening as well. With um the exception of ninth grade that had theirs last year, those students would still be welcome to come into the building. Uh, and then the ALC uh also. So a very busy night, a great night to show off um the, the facilities. And a great opportunity for students and families to connect with their teachers for the coming year. Uh, we also have a heads up on Otter Pride Night coming up on September fifteenth uh from five to seven. So I want to make sure the community knows they are invited to that. And the Five Forty-four Foundation will once again be doing taco and a bag, so a great opportunity to support the foundation. Uh, Mark mentioned this, uh, Principal Anderson, uh, there has been a slight review to the curriculum or revision to the curriculum review cycle. Uh, the state has not done yet with the social studies standards. Uh, that's been a lengthy, lengthy process, uh, but that's ongoing. It does not make sense for us to proceed with the social studies adoption when the standards have not been completely vetted and, and published. Uh, the other component to that, uh, this actually works out fairly well for us. Uh, we have really been hit hard um as an organization with a number of big curriculum adoptions. So we've had math, we've had language arts, um, we've had science and they have really stacked up. Um, it's a big process when you're looking at um the middle school and high school. It's an even bigger process for the elementary teachers because they're teaching every single one of those subjects. So every year it's been a major uh curriculum adoption to embed into their, their instruction. So this year, uh, flip-flopping fight and health with social studies will give our elementary teachers a bit of a reprieve. A chance to catch their breath and uh continue working on the refinement of the embedding of science, math and English. The language arts that's happened in the last couple of years. Uh, this is basically a quick snapshot of what happens um with that curriculum. You can see the two pink boxes on our curriculum cycle on the second line from the top have just been flip-flopped. And then the adjustments have been made um with those curriculums in our cycle moving forward. And with that, uh, very excited about the upcoming year and we'll turn it over for questions.
You got any uh contact at all with, with the Fergus PD about SROs? I know Morehead, they, they've got an issue up there where they're not gonna, they're not gonna staff them until something's changed, that and some of the restraint issues.
Uh, yes, uh, Chief Bergren reached out to me uh at the end of last week just to indicate that um they are planning to fully support us as they have in the past. And um they also through some grant money, uh, have some additional funding for a part-time position to give further support to our elementary students. Uh, there is a meeting, um, I know for law enforcement coming up this Thursday at the um center over in Otter Tail City where law enforcement will talk about the new legislative changes. But yes, uh, we have a great relationship with our local police department and they are continuing to support us as they always have, which is much appreciated.
I asked one of the officers last week, one of the administrative staff, how many times a year they likely would use the type of hold that's restricted? Half a dozen times. So to discontinue the service because of, in objection to, it seems a little short-sighted. But so I appreciate that our local guys are sticking to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we'll move on to our general consent items. Uh, we have the minutes from our August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting and then our bills and treasures report, uh, or bills, August eleventh through.
Yes, no treasures report this time of the bills. Um, Missy and I went through what's remaining this morning and then looked at the bills and it's a shorter list, it's only two and a half pages, uh, because it's the mid-month or the month-end review. Nothing unusual, we uh had talked about a number of things as far as in a window, office window, the window comstock had, that was about twelve thousand dollars between the window and, and some trenching that they did. Fifty thousand dollars to cassette electric, which was a lot of wiring for some of the, for the smart panels. Uh, Matt, you, you sent an email out to us last week about uh gas usage. So we identified that it's in the west meter and it's actually down from eight thousand last year, same month. And so there's, and it's kind of weird because once we hit October, then it switches from Great Plains to Constellation. So then that meter totally changes because we get into the heating season. Um, we were speculating right now that it has to do with the, with the pool. It's the west meter, that we identified where the, it's about ninety percent of the usage is in the west meter.
Okay.
So we're thinking it's a pool heating, um, but we're nice to, we can see if we can follow up with the, with the custodian staff and see, see exactly what's going on there. Um, just a number of miscellaneous bills, um, a little bit of curriculum, um, twenty-eight thousand for Cisco switch upgrades. Um, thirty-seven five thousand five hundred to Zurburg for Lincoln Two. And uh probably the most notable one is the uh final payment to uh Metropolitan Mechanical. And uh we have been holding back on the last seventy-seven thousand dollars until we got some training. The training actually has to come from carrier and so we really don't have any leverage with, with that training by holding back in Metropolitan. So, so that means that we'll have, as soon as that bill is paid, we'll have paid off the uh, the total, um, total for the air conditioning system. So that's about it.
So is that something with Lakes Country Service Co-op, then that we go after then?
On the training piece, we'll work with Melissa Matson and then the school district as well. And then Blaine Parkos with ATS and R is also continuing to reach out to them on the fulfillment of their contractual obligations.
Unless there's questions, that's a short list today.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll move to Chris Mau and Blaine Benfica.
Yeah, I hope for the next board meeting, I don't quite have my list, I have had all summer. Um, under support staff resignations, we have Emily Barowski, student support aide. Tiana Benson, special ed para, and Myrna Manosa, para educator. Myrna resigned only to take on um the reading math interventionist position over at McKinley. Um, Teresa Hursburg, student support aide, and Jessica Beala Helderson, early childhood classroom assistant. Under support staff hires, we have a title one para, um, at McKinley, Julie Johnson, that Scott mentioned. Um, we have three special ed paras, Kathy Barker, Holly Selverson, and Jackson Knick, Knick, excuse me. Um, we still have an opening for sure for at least one special ed para prior to the start of school. I'm not sure if we're gonna make that or not, but um that's another opening we have. Uh, otherwise, we have Vera Cox, um, Savannah, or she goes by Anna Fremont, as student support aides. Matt Opetz, he is changing positions as Doug had mentioned, from a night lead custodian here at Kennedy Secondary School to the um head custodian over at Cleveland, taking Brett Duno's position. Tom Hagy, para educator at Adams. And then um Kobe Sarah Stowen and Kobe Laurent. Um, both of those will be full-time custodians here at Kennedy Secondary School, starting within a week or two. Certified staff hires, Myrna Manosa, as I mentioned before, um, reading math interventionist teacher. Heather Haikus, um, she has a increase to her contract. She was going um teaching two days a week last year, she is going to be teaching four days a week this year. So, um, just an increase in her current contract. Certified staff resignation, Eliza Robertson, special ed teacher here at Kennedy. Um, individual contracts, Jody Kitter, student services coordinator, and Brian Warren, school, family, community liaison. That's a new position that we um had board approved, I believe, at our last board meeting or the meeting before, I can't remember which one. But um that's a one-year contract for both of those two. Under overloads, we have Joel Haikus. He has been doing an annual overload of one class for the last three, four years, I think. Um, and then Leah Koalska, overload of a point zero seven, um, just because of her um schedules between McKinley, um, let me see, it's McKinley and is at Adams and it's Kennedy Secondary School, middle school. Um, so we had to do some adjustments with her schedule just because of the, her traveling time and such in between all of those. So I would request board approval on these items.
Um, can I get a motion to approve our general consent items?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion, questions? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Those items are approved. Um, there's no old, old business, so moved in new business. Uh, first item is community education trip request to France, uh, June fourth, twenty twenty-four through June twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. And that's good, it's approved. Um, then we have the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Lakes Country Service Co-op ECFE consortium membership. Get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That's approved. And then we have um a slew of agreements here, uh, for a variety of different components to the Phase Two Lincoln Project. So our first one is agreement between Eastside Glass Company, Inc., the contractor, and Ari Morton and Associates LLC Construction Manager, and Zurburg Architects Architect, and the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the Phase Two Lincoln Project, A B Aluminum Doors and Windows. Can I get a motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That agreement is approved. Then we have an agreement between Gas Construction Company, Inc., Ari Morton and Associates LLC, and Zurburg Architects, and the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the Phase Two Lincoln Project, Six A Carpentry. Uh, can I get a motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. All right, that one is approved. We'll move on to number five, an agreement between Sparkies Welding and Fabrication LLC, Ari Morton and Associates LLC, and Zurburg Architects, and the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the Phase Two Lincoln Project, Five B Steel Erection. Can I get a motion to approve that agreement?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That one is approved. We have agreement between Solar Midwest, Inc., and DVA Daylight Specialties LLC, Ari Morton and Associates LLC, and Zurburg Architects, and the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the Phase Two Lincoln Project, AC Skylights. Can I get a motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
In a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That one is approved. Then we have agreement between K and K Fabrication, Inc., Ari Morton and Associates LLC, and Zurburg Architects, and the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the Phase Two Lincoln Project, Five A Steel Supply. Can I get a motion to approve that agreement?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That one is approved. Then we have an agreement between Full Spectrum Finishing, Inc., Ari Morton and Associates LLC. And Zurburg Architects and the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the Phase Two Lincoln Project, Nine A Gypsum System. Can I get a motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That agreement is approved. Then we're gonna go on agreement between Fergus Drywall, Inc., Ari Morton and Associates LLC. And Zurburg Architects and the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the Phase Two Lincoln Project, Nine A Gypsum System. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That agreement is approved. And our last one then is agreement between Camroot, Camroot Foss Concrete Construction, Inc. Ari Morton and Associates LLC. And Zurburg Architects and the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the Phase Two Lincoln Project, Three A Cast-in Place Concrete. Can I get a motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. All right, that final agreement is approved. Then we will move on. We have a resolution for designation of an, an identified official with authority for education identity and access management. The Minnesota Department of Education Professional Educator Licensing Standards Board. An officer of higher education require annual designation of an identified official with authority, which they reference as Iowa. For each local educational agency that uses education identity and access management system. Iowa is responsible for authorizing, reviewing and recertifying user access for their local educational agency in accordance with the State of Minnesota Enterprise. Identity and Access Management Standard, which states that all users. All user access rights to the Minnesota state systems must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. The Iowa will authorize user access to the State of Minnesota Education Secure Systems in accordance with the user's assigned job duties. And will revoke that user's access when it is no longer needed to perform their job duties. The Fergus Falls School Board designates Jeffrey Drake as an Iowa to authorize user access to the State of Minnesota Education Secure Websites. For the Fergus Falls Public School District, Five Forty-four dash zero one. Will someone offer that resolution and report its adoption?
I'll offer a resolution for its adoption.
And a second?
A second.
And let me see where we take role.
Steven Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Coleman.
Yes.
Matthew Lindman.
Yes.
And see her name is yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. And then our last item on our agenda tonight, or this morning, is our community survey proposal for school perceptions. Can I get a motion to approve that proposal?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That proposal is approved. Our next regular school board meeting is Monday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-three at five fifteen here in the Otter Community Room, so going back to evenings. And can I get a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Our meeting is adjourned.